Ah, that got your attention. So I'd like to call us to order. Welcome to our meeting. Please put your cellphones on do not disturb or stun or whatever they are so they don't ring during the meeting. I appreciate that. And we're going to have a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records show reflect that all members are present.
Okay. We have two things coming up. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance and we're going to do our invocation. The pledge of allegiance is going to be led by our council member Rigby, followed by the invocation by associate pastor for Hispanic Ministries of Grace Presbyterian Church, Reverend Eliseer, Elise, oh now I looked at that, Eliasir Barantes. Is that going to do it? Is she here? After I murdered her name? Okay. Okay, so, everybody lies please. We'll do the pledge of allegiance first.
Please join me by placing your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quiet, please let I have you quiet.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for the opportunity of being here today. Enjoy one more day and feel your presence in our hearts and our souls. At this moment, we pray for our friends, brothers and sisters in Florida and Texas and Montana, suffering different things, from the nature and from fire. We ask for your protection and your peace to their families. Father, we thank you for the opportunity of being here for this meeting, direct all our leaders from the city to guide us with wisdom and respect to one another and the powerful name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Barantes. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. Next thing is the approval of the agenda by our city manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you Mayor. There is one change to the agenda. We are going to be removing item D1, entitled solutions for change requests for funding. So this will be removed from the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. And then our city attorney Darryl Piper is going to bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you Mayor. The council did meet in closed session this evening to discuss the litigation shown as item CS1 on today's closed session agenda. No action was taken that is required to be reported at this time.
Thank you. And I have two presentations, and so I'd like to have Fire Chief Japon join me at the podium. We're going to have a proclamation recognized in 2017 as the 90th anniversary of the Vista Fire Department, and then another proclamation celebrating today, September 12, 2017, as the 40th anniversary of our Vista paramedic program. So if Chief Han will join me down here, I will come down and read the proclamations. Oh, it's okay. I guess, yeah, if you're too hard to hold in. Okay, so, just a minute here. I'm going to give you this one. Oops, there we go. Where's this one? So the first proclamation is for the Vista Fire Department, celebrating its 90th anniversary in 2017, whereas in December 1926, the Vista irrigation district suffered a fire that galvanized the town of Vista to form and organize an agency to fight fires. In early 1927, a community effort to purchase fire hose and accept the donation of a hose cart from Oceanside were the first official steps in the creation of a volunteer fire department. Whereas 14 local men were elected to the Vista volunteer fire department, and Ernest Lawrence, a night watchman, was elected by the 14 firefighters to serve as the first volunteer fire chief. On December 12, 1944, the first commissioners of the Vista Fire Protection District were elected, and the city of Vista was incorporated on January 28, 1963, and on June 29, 1964, formed the City of Vista Fire Department. Whereas in 1964, an agreement was reached between the city and the Fire Protection District for the city to provide fire protection services to the entire area. And in 1968, the fire department started providing emergency medical transport services, and in 1977 began providing advanced life support services. Today, the Vista Fire Department provides world-class services and is the only accredited civilian fire department in San Diego County, one of 17 in the state of California, and one of 239 accredited agencies in the world. So now therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council do hereby recognize 2017 as the 90th anniversary of the Vista Fire Department, and we encourage the community to join us in commemorating this momentous occasion. So congratulations on that to you. And this one is regarding the paramedic program. So when the city of Vista was incorporated on January 28, 1963, there was no paramedic program in place. And whereas in 1968, the Vista Fire Department first started transporting patients in its own ambulance. In the mid 1970s, a citizens committee was formed to study a new idea in emergency medical services known as paramedics. These paramedics would perform life support services which until then were only available in a hospital. On March 8, 1977, the citizens of Vista voted to fund the establishment, operation and maintenance of a mobile intensive care program known as paramedics. And on September 12, 1977, the city of Vista formally established its paramedic program, which today provides its citizens with responsive, high-quality, advanced life support and emergency medical services. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby celebrate September 12, 2017, as the 40th anniversary of the Vista paramedic program, and encourage the community to join us in commemorating this momentous occasion. So congratulation on that also. Now can you say something? Are you ready? Okay. Okay, I have Japon say something, and I just have to tell you that my grandson is actually in his final stages of becoming a paramedic. So someday, he hopes to work someday in the Vista, I hope.
Excellent. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for your support in celebrating our 90 years of existence in Vista, and certainly the council members and mayors that came before you, obviously, that have supported us throughout the years. Members of the city who have supported us and made us a more professional organization and kept us together and pointed in the right direction all these years. And certainly, most importantly, you, the public, who have supported us and supported us through them to serve you and all of our programs and to grow along with the community. So thank you all very much. I also want to call out the members of the department. I've been obviously looking back on our history a little bit over these last couple of weeks coming up to these anniversaries. And, you know, we are really standing on the shoulders of some great people who have served this community for 90 years, day in and day out, night and day, rain or shine. They've been there for the community, there for you. And so that's a, that's a big deal. That's a very momentous occasion. And looking back on, you know, since 1927, when there were 553 people in this community, they realized the danger to the community from fire. There was a fire when we were getting water to the community and they were building reservoirs and welding, they lit some brush fires. And then the water company itself had a fire in their offices and almost burned down the water company. So they decided, well, it's probably a good idea to form a fire department. And in 1927, that happened. And fast forward with community service from 14 members serving 553 people to today, where we serve over 120,000 people in our community, both in the city and the Vista Fire Protection District around us. So it's, it's been a very good, good ride for all of us, and we're very honored to serve the community. On the 40th anniversary, which when we were looking at this, it was, it was pretty momentous that on this very day, 40 years ago, paramedic service started in Vista. And when we were looking at how the numbers lined up, it was amazing. There's a city council meeting today, so it was a great opportunity to celebrate that. And to give you a little background of where that comes from, if you can roll the clock back and imagine in the 40s and 50s, if you got sick in this community, in any community in the area, really in the nation, and you needed to go to the hospital, you'd, you'd go in the car. Or in here, they talked about taking in a farmer's pickup truck, they would take you over to the hospital. And then went into the 40s and 50s, it was actually the local mortuary that would send their hearse to take you to the hospital. It was more comfortable. But over time, I guess, in terms of business, they didn't get a whole lot of, as medicine improved, they didn't get a whole lot of return customers that they could take back. So they got out of that business and private ambulance took over. But in the 60s, the Vista Press had an article that said the average wait time in Vista for a private ambulance to take people to the hospital is about an hour and a half. And so with the support of the council and the community, the Vista Fire Department bought an ambulance and began transporting people to the hospital. Then in the late 60s, through the development, mostly actually in the military through the World War II, Korea, and especially the Vietnam experiences of treating soldiers in the field with trained medics, that came into the civilian world and paramedic programs started to develop. And we were one of the first in San Diego County, again, with a citizens group who studied it and the support of the council and the city, we implemented a paramedic program in 1977 to better serve our residents here. As I was looking at that on a personal note, all these sevens came up. It's 2017, 1927, which it says on our patch that we were, that we started, and 1977, when our paramedic program started. Seven years, the seven year anniversary after 1977, a young paramedic walked through the door at Station 1 and turned out to be the seventh career fire chief of this department. And I am honored to be that guy. So I don't know how all the sevens lined up, but it just kind of jumped at me, if you're into those kind of numbers. So it's a big celebration for all of us, certainly. So thank you again. This is a tremendous honor, this I think a tremendous milestone for our community and certainly for our fire department, and thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Thank you Chief Han. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations of the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. So items C1 through C7 are on our consent calendar, and I don't, no one from the public has pulled anything. How about the council? No? If not, I would entertain a motion. Have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. So please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously for the consent calendar. The next thing on our agenda is our, is our discussion items. And the first item is the sewer service rates for fiscal years 2018, 19 through 2022 and 23. So our principal engineer, Elmer Alex, will provide the staff report.
Good evening Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Elmer Alex, principal engineer in sewer engineering, and with me is Mr. Sanjay Gaur from Raftless Financial Consultants. I'll start our presentation here, providing the background on sewer services, and Mr. Gaur will discuss the financial model and the cost of service study that their firm performed. And then I'll discuss the staff recommendation for sewer rates for fiscal year 1819 to 2223 for both the city of Vista and the Buenos sanitation district. So the city runs both the city of Vista sewer system and the Buenos sanitation district sewer systems. The city of Vista sewer system started in 1920, owns approximately 215 miles of pipeline, three pump stations, and owns approximately 100 million in assets. The Buenos sanitation district was created in 1960, has about 100 miles of pipeline, one pump station, and owns about $40 million in assets. Both Vista and Bueno are members of Encina wastewater authority, which treats our wastewater and maintains the pump stations. The Buenos sanitation district includes parts of South Vista and also unincorporated areas of the county and parts of San Marcos. Just kind of brief overview, our sewer service primarily provides transportation removal of viruses, bacteria and solids and organics, and ultimately does disposal of that treated wastewater away. The sewer service helps build healthier communities by taking those bacteria and solids away from our residents, treats them, and sends that out to the ocean. And also, we also provide disposal of wastewater from the businesses that are generated within the city. So our sewer service rates provide funds to operate and maintain our sewer system. Our public work staff operate and maintain the pipeline system in order to provide, prevent sanitary sewer overflows, and this involves inspecting the pipelines and cleaning the pipelines on a regularly scheduled basis. So once all the pipelines and pump stations have brought that wastewater to the wastewater treatment plant at Encina in Carlsbad, they remove that, they remove the solids that are in the wastewater and also help reduce the biochemical oxygen demand. And on my next slide, we'll talk about what really is biochemical oxygen demand. So that's the primary strength indicator of wastewater. So the higher the BOD levels in the wastewater, the more intensive it is to treat, and a lot more energy is spent to reduce that biochemical oxygen demand, or BOD. The next couple of slides here provide the mayor and the council with information on the performance of the utilities compared to our neighboring agencies. This slide shows the total number of public sewer spills since January 23 and 2013. As you can see, both Vista and Bueno are performing very well compared to our neighboring Next slide provides the total volume of public spills. As you can see, both Vista and Bueno are performing ahead of every, most of the agencies next to us. It's important to note that the state can have enforcement actions on utilities in cities if the number of volumes and spills get to a certain point. Typically, those fines range from $2 to $10 per gallon for fines on sewer spills. Some of the major accomplishments that the Vista sewer system has done, we have done in proxy since 2013, is 13 miles of rehabilitation of the pipelines. That's where we use the cured and place pipe to make repairs. We were about 75% complete on the agua head and on the lift station completion, and also parallel force main at Bueno Vista pump station, and completed replacement of the programming logic controller at the Raceway Basin pump station. In Bueno, we've also accomplished 13 miles of rehabilitation of the sewer system. We're in the process of building a new land outfall, which is the main pipeline that leads out to Encina. We had just recently completed the variable frequency drive and programming logic controllers at Bueno Creek pump station. Those are the computers that run our pump stations. And also had completed removing a major trunk sewer over by Watson Way and getting that outside of the creek. Sewer, the sewer service rates are fees, and there are revenues that are solely dedicated for providing sewer services, both in O and M and capital projects, and also administrative staff. Rates must be based on the benefits to the user and are approved by citizens, are approved by the city council through citizen initiative proposition 218. So the revenues are used for our capital improvement projects. One set of projects that we, we call them the repair and replacement projects. These are projects that were planned based on condition. So staff developed an asset management plan in order to properly manage these $140 million of assets that the city and Bueno owns, and determine the most cost efficient way to deliver service, but not be out of compliance with the state. In that asset management plan, we worked with our consultant to develop a business decision logic. And in that logic, we wanted to provide to the council and to our citizens a transparent decision-making process on what the repair action is needed for each of those pipelines. The pipelines are based on condition of what the condition is and will determine the renewal methods. We had shown three primary methods for our pipelines. One to be an open trans where we would have to cut through a street and disturb residents' traffic flow, but also a more cost effective cured and place liner, which is lining the pipe. That's much more cost effective and less disruptive to the public. Or simply just monitor the pipeline through our TV program. So in that asset management program, we need to do a prioritization of what pipelines need to be replaced. So staff developed a scoring system to prioritize those replacements, with zero being a brand new pipe in perfect condition, with 100 being the worst condition pipe, which, like a pipe shown there to the right, with a hole in it. And that has since been repaired, by the way. The next slides show, you know, if we were to make all the repairs for the entire system, the left dot shows that we, it would take us $15.7 million to complete all the repairs within the system in present day dollars. But what we did was we applied that business decision logic we talked about earlier, and that would show that we would need about $8 million over the next five years to do repair and replacements, and with $7.3 million in the Vista system and approximately $700,000 worth in the Bueno system. Just to give you a perspective of how much of that is the system, that's only 7% of our entire system that needs repaired. The other 93%, we're putting on a monitoring program to watch it. The next set of projects we typically work on are the capacity assurance projects. These make sure that we have enough capacity in our pipelines for both our current customers and future customers that come to Vista. So the last capacity analysis was completed in 2008, but there was a lot of things that have happened since then. The county adopted a general plan, which was adopted in 2011. In 2012, we had the Vista general plan 2030. And then in 2015, we adopted a downtown specific plan. That changed a lot of things of how the city was going to grow in zoning. But most importantly, we experienced a drought from 2012 to 2017, and that affected people behaviorally and business-wise on how much indoor water use is used. So the results of the capacity plan is currently under environmental review and be brought to the council later this year. But because of those investments made in the, in the system that we talked about, those projects earlier, we've reduced the overall rain peaking factor from 1.9 to 1.6. The overall peaking factors talk about how much more rain we get into our system that gets sent down to Encina. Also, we have reduced our generation from the average resident, that's 250 gallons per day is a typical household back in 2008, but we're making the recommendation now that we're using 205 gallons per dwelling unit. What this means is going to be less project, less capacity projects that have to be done. So we talked about those different projects, both the capacity, repair and replacement. Our public work staff does the operation and maintenance of our pipeline system, and Encina does our treatment, disposal and capital improvements at the station. We take all that information and develop that into a cost of service study. So the city engaged Raftless Financial Consultants. They're a specialized financial consultant with experience in proposition 218, with the goal of distributing costs evenly across all customers based on flow and strength of sewage. We took into account and reviewed Vista irrigation water data for commercial industrial, and we also looked at our sewage data, meter data throughout the system and at Encina. So I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Gaur to talk about the details of the cost of service and financial plan.
Thank you Elmer. Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor, city council staff, I'd like to present this part of the presentation. So as Elmer mentioned, the first step in doing a rate study is the financial plan. And really, it's a question about how much revenue we need to collect on an annual basis to cover all the costs that Elmer mentioned. So those, so we look at the revenues that you generate from your current rates, we look at the financial policies, we look at the operating budget, we forecast that out, we look at your capital expenditure, we take into account your debt, and we develop a long-range financial plan or tool, which staff has a copy of the model that we developed. Next, what we do is, is then we look at the actual flows that are occurring. So we look, and sort of interesting, because we know what's going into the wastewater treatment plant, Encina has that data. We know the number of customers that you have. So then we can do a simple algebra exercise where to determine, well, what's the flows that are required to meet that? And technically, that's called a mass balance or plant balance, where we look at that information. Now, as Elmer mentioned, one of the interesting things that occurred is that flows for residential customers has significantly dropped. And that's due to many factors. One of them, of course, is the drought. You know, people heard the call and they reduced their water use. The other is also end-use appliances. So a lot of the new appliances out there, dishwasher, washing machines, they use a significantly amount, less amount of water. Now, one of the challenges though is, as people use less water, the strength, the BOD that Elmer mentioned, is increasing. So we see the shift that's occurring, and so when you see the rates, things are slightly moving around because the flows are lower for residential, but the strengths for other customers have increased because of these different factors. So the next step we do is we look at our customers and we ask, well, what are the different strengths of our customer class, and how do we group them together? So if you think about offices, schools, retail, churches, what they, how the, the end-use of water are similar. So we put that, and that's considered low strength. Then hotel, manufacturing, auto repair, industry laundry, that's medium strength. And then the high strengths are the restaurants, breweries, manufacturing of good beverages and grocery stores, where there's a lot more food processing that's occurring, and because of that, has more BODs, and that's considered high strength. Next, what we do is, is then we look at the budget, and we ask ourselves, well, how much of the budget is associated with collection, how much is associated with the treatment plant? That's actually very simple, because we have Encina's cost, which is the treatment plant, and your cost is basically the budget's collection. Collection is 100% flow related, that makes sense. Treatment, then we look and we ask ourselves, well, how much of the treatment is flow and BOD? Again, we work with Encina, we work with staff to determine the correct percentages associated with that. Once we've done that, then we know how much revenue we want to collect. Then we can actually go through a mathematical process where we can determine what is the cost to provide flow related, the BOD biochem oxygen demand, and total suspended. And then we can actually get unit rates to derive the rates. And so the report that we developed shows the mathematical steps associated with it. So if anyone's really interested in sewer rates, and sort of like, well, how are these rates calculated? How are they determined? They can take the time and they can actually follow the math and see how the rates are calculated. And that's one of the deliverables we provided. Now I'm going to turn it back to Elmer.
Thanks Sanjay. So one of the things staff worked with, with Sanjay and his team was that we looked at the biochemical oxygen demand trend at Encina. And this graph here shows for both Vista and Bueno, since the last cost of service study, we've seen an over 30% increase in, in BOD. The next slide shows the same trend for the solids in the wastewater, also approximately 30% increase. So it's important to note that both in suspended solids and BOD, that Encina uses a three-year trailing average. So they're looking at our data and seeing that our data is increasing in the next, last three years, so our treatment costs are going to be increasing there. So with the information and the cost of service study prepared by Raftless, staff recommends the following sewer service fees. The first slide here shows the proposed Vista residential rates. For a single family, we are proposing a two-year rate freeze, followed by a one-year percent increase, followed by two successive 2% increases for Vista residential. Single family composed of, single family homes, duplexes and condominiums. Multi-family rate applies to apartments and mobile homes. For Bueno residential, there's two rates, both if you live within the city and one if you're outside the county. So because of the analysis that we talked about here, staff recommends an initial approximate 6.8% reduction in single, in residential rates, with no annual increases through fiscal year 22, 23, the end of this rates, rate program. The difference between the city and the county rates are attributed to the water quality protection staff, which the city provides for Bueno customers in the city limits. The county of San Diego provides these services for the Bueno customers outside of the city. The next rates we're showing here are the Vista 6.8% reduction in residential rates with no annual increases through fiscal year '22, '23, the end of this rate program. The difference between the city and the county rates are attributed to the water quality protection staff, which the city provides for Bueno customers in the city limits. The county of San Diego provides these services for the Bueno customers outside of the city. The next rates we're showing here are the Vista commercial-industrial rates. So these are, the cost-of-service studies are recommending increases for both the commercial and industrial. The commercial rate includes two components. One is the fixed component, and the next is the flow component. The fixed component is a portion of the bill based on how much capacity a property owns. These are measured in EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, which is a flow similar to a single-family resident. The flow charge is based on total strength and, based on strength and total amount of flow. And staff recommends an annual 2% increases through fiscal year '22, '23. It's important to note that, to take a note on the high, commercial high classification, in 2007, the cost-of-service study only allocated 500 milligrams per liter of BOD, which is a concentration level of BOD. The current study recommends increasing that allocation to 1,000 to account for the strong wastewater coming from these commercial and industrial users. For Bueno city, commercial and industrial rates, there's also recommended increases there. The major change here is staff is recommending allocating that water quality protection staff, we talked about, program to the fixed portion of the sewer rate, as that program is primarily correlated with the amount of sewage generated and not the strength of the sewer. In previous rates, the water quality protection services were allocated across both the fixed and strength portions, so we're allocating all that cost to the fix. For Bueno city, staff is recommending no annual increases through fiscal year '22, '23 after this one-time adjustment. For Bueno County, commercial and industrial rates, we're recommending, staff's recommending no increases to the fixed portion. However, we're recommending increases to the strength portion for both low, medium, and high. If you could note that these strength ratings, strength costs per 100 cubic feet are both equal in both Bueno city and Bueno County. The next set of charges is called the, what we call the excess usage charges. These are charged to commercial industrial properties that generate wastewater above the capacity of sewer that they own. The charge here shows two components. One is that they'd be charged an additional commercial fixed portion that is used above their ownership. That's that 165, the 200, and the 158 that you saw there, as this is capacity used in the system. Second, we're recommending assessing a rental charge to these properties for using the, and taking advantage of the excess capacity in the system that properties have not paid for through capacity fees. Because there's so many moving parts in the rates for commercial and industrial, we wanted to show this graph for Vista commercial industrial on what the average low, medium, and high customers will see. You see here that these are their average flow levels for the different strength ratings, with the low and medium-strength customers seeing about a 10% increase or an average of $300 per year, and the high strength, the average high strength seeing about a $450 per year or 18% increase. We also did the same analysis for Bueno city commercial customers, showing these, again, these are average customers with about 11% increase in low, 14% increase in medium, and about 22% increase in high. We also performed analysis for Bueno County, showing that the average low strength will see about a 12% increase or $300 per year, medium strength about $193, and high strength about 228, about a 13% increase. So in summary, staff is recommending in Vista residential, two years initial rate freeze, followed by one and 2%, 2% annual increases, with a variable adjustment in commercial industrial, followed by 2% increases. In Bueno, we're recommending a reduction for city and county with no annual increases for commercial industrial, a variable adjustment, followed by no annual increases. So staff recommends that we, you approve the sewer rate study for both the city of Vista and the Bueno sanitation district, and that we conduct a public hearing on these rates on November 14th, 2017, and that we notice all property owners not less than 45 days prior to the hearing, and that at that point, the property owners can register the support or protest against these sewer rates. Staff is available with any questions you may have on this matter.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for this very comprehensive report. I appreciate it very much. I do want to just clarify or punctuate a little bit that the monies that come from these rate increases, even though they're small, all goes back into the infrastructure, into capital improvement and operation of the sewer system. It's not something that we're using for other things, because I had a couple of people ask me about that, and I just want to make sure that we have that very clear. And also, with a notice for the property owners not less than 45 days prior to the hearing date, the notice to property owners, can you remind us again how that will be delivered to property owners?
That we deliver via mail with the ownership of record for each of the properties, and we also will be noticing it through our website and also through the newspaper.
Okay. So to the property owners, not necessarily the person, if we have a renter, the renter might not get notice if it's just going to the property owner. So we'll really do a good job on all of our communication outlets to get people to know about it. So you've done a great job, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Alex also. The mayor and I are with, on the board for Encina wastewater, and Mr. Alex is always there, also is one of our alternates in answering questions and helping with that, so thank you for that. So I would like to go ahead and move that we set the public hearing for November the 14th, and that we approve the sewer rate study from Raftalus Financial Consultants and direct a public hearing be noticed to the consumers, and also approve the sewer rate study also from Raftalus Financial Consultants, and direct that a public hearing be noticed to consider those other rate adjustments. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just wanted to second Councilwoman Rigby's comments, and also add that I think the staff's done a great job managing the fiscal condition of our two sewer systems, and really pleased that we're going to have modest increases that will not outstrip inflation in the one system and decreases in the other. I think that that's an excellent outcome. So with that said, thanks for your good work, and I would second the motion.
Okay. I don't have any public speakers. I see no one else has any comments, but I'd also like to thank you for the report. That was very comprehensive and easy to understand, you know, but it's kind of a difficult thing to understand, so we appreciate you taking the time and putting that together. So with that, I guess we'll vote. Cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. That brings us, the next thing on the agenda, to our oral communications. And each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on the agenda, and our first speaker is Karina Contreras. No clapping, we don't, we're just, these are just public speakers on things on the
Hello, and good evening. You know, I just, I wanted to continue the public comments that went on at the last city council meeting on the 22nd of August. I wasn't really satisfied, nor were a lot of the people in the community with the response that the council had. You know, so one thing that I want to do is kind of just walk through the history that the community as a whole has had with the sheriff's department. Unfortunately, I'm going to highlight some of the incidents that were, you know, not good. In 2013, we had Antonio Martinez who had, has Down syndrome. He was beaten brutally by the police. He was pepper sprayed, and, you know, he was just near the family bakery. The captain had actually wanted to make peace with the family by offering a Christmas turkey. Okay? That's not acceptable. Looking at 2005, three unarmed Latinos were killed, were shot in the back. In 2007, two African-American youth were unlawfully detained by the Vista sheriffs, while in custody, one of them was hogtied and beaten. These young men won nearly half a million dollars in a lawsuit. In 2011, Ismail Martinez was stopped by the Vista sheriffs. The passenger was his son, Francisco Martinez. He was developmentally, is developmentally disabled. He attempted to help his father, and both were beaten and tased. So it seems like there's a big gap in training, and I understand that Vista has a contract with the sheriffs. What I want to see, because I know all of us really care about our community, but what I want to see, and what the community members behind me want to see, is that we don't just sign blank checks. We tell people, listen, you have an obligation to keep the community safe, which means you need to understand the community that you're in. I think that we can do a much better job. I think the sheriffs, you know, I've had really great encounters with them where, you know, they're very respectful. I honestly think they probably don't get paid enough for what they do, but we should provide them the training that they want to be able to keep our communities safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Hoyt, followed by... Maria Hoyt, followed by Dr. Kathleen Boyle.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to second my, the motion for the request that Karina made. I'm looking for the accountability. I'm looking for a, an external committee to investigate all of these shootings and all the incidents that have been happening with the Vista Sheriff's Department, the training as well. There's one in particular officer that killed two young men who were unarmed within a span of eight months. That's less than it takes for a child to develop. Both narratives are identical. You can cut and paste the victims' names, all the information, the scenarios, everything. Unfortunately, we don't have an external committee, and the entities that are investigating seem to side with law enforcement. Unfortunately, until it happens to you, you don't really see that as a problem. I do, I do. It has affected me personally. It has affected a lot of people that I know personally, not just with my family member. But I think that if we trained that particular officer, because I believe he had only been in the department for a little over three years, don't quote me on that one because I lost my notes, but had we trained him correctly and thoroughly, I don't think that would have happened, because there were all more than 15 shots. I don't think it takes that many shots to stop anybody, no matter how hardcore you are. I don't think you need more than one or two to stop him and to do your duty as a law enforcement officer, take him into custody, and let due process go. That's what I'm here to ask for, is an external committee to investigate these incidents.
Thank you. Dr. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Alexis, it looks like Penchiri, Penchirri?
Hi, good evening. My, most of what I have to say is addressed to Councilwoman Franklin. In the recent fatality involving law enforcement in Vista, a sheriff deputy delivered 15 rounds into the back of a young man, Jonathan Cornell, who was prostrate on the ground, hands behind his back, he was surrendering. Despite knowing these facts, you councilmen opined to the crowd that people must learn to show their hands to the police. Jonathan was showing his hands to the police, and they were behind his back. Karina Contreras from the, from the audience attempted to remind you of this. She spoke from the audience, something she feels so emotional about. You became incensed and said that if she did not remain silent, you would call security and have her escorted out. Really? This escalated an emotional moment of hers with a hostile moment of yours. You shook your finger at her as if she were a child, and you shouted, "This is what democracy looks like." No, Councilwoman Franklin, this is what democracy looks like. Democracy is not always neat and tidy. It's not always quiet and restrained. To threaten Karina with being dragged out was the move of a bully. You could have just said, "Please try to remember the protocol here." You asked Karina, "What are you doing to educate your community to show their hands to law enforcement?" No, Councilman, what are you doing to educate yourself on differing perspectives for the varied sectors of the Vista community, which is your community? Different people have different realities. I think you and I, as white people, are not going to be treated the same way if we're stopped for a broken taillight as a person of color. What are you doing to put pressure on our contracted law enforcement to learn de-escalation strategies? What is the policy on keeping a deputy on active duty after a fatality? The deputy who killed Jonathan had another fatality, as was mentioned. He was reassigned from another city. Did you ask why? What are you doing to work with law enforcement, to do community policing, to know the dangerous people versus mentally or cognitively challenged? And I think this has been mentioned also, that Vista sheriffs had beat up people with mental challenges because they couldn't understand, they couldn't comprehend what they were telling them to do. There's also people around who don't speak English or Spanish. They might speak some language that nobody else, does that mean they get roughed up? Officers who are truly community-oriented would know these realities, would know who's who. You spoke of your staff member who wants her law enforcement husband to return home each night. Councilwoman Franklin, every person on the face of the earth wants to return home every night, and many don't make it. Thank you.
Okay, this is a council chamber, and she spoke about decorum in the council chamber. We don't really allow clapping. I've been letting you do a little bit, but if you just kind of restrain yourself, please. We have one more speaker after this one. Alexis? Alexis, it's Penchirri? Okay, you're here to talk to us?
Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows.
They can see you. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, guys. My name is Alexis. I'm with the Backfence Society and Only Losers Litter. I just wanted to take this opportunity to let everybody know in our city, anybody watching, that we do, pardon me, a monthly trash walk, and we have a very special one coming up on October 22nd. It's going to be zombie-themed, and we will be giving away, we will be giving away a prize for the trashiest zombie costume. So any community participation is greatly welcomed, and of course, we would love to see you guys there as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Spinks, I live at 243 North Citrus. So I have three things to talk about tonight. First thing, thank you. This weekend was awesome. I'm still kind of recovering. Alley Art Festival was so fun. I think the most fun part about it was all the children that I saw out and about. It was, it was amazing. I think all the kids that I know had a blast, and anybody who was able to come, I hope you had fun too. I think you all know that I work and live downtown, and I love all the new street lighting. I feel a lot safer. I feel a lot safer. I still walk with my pepper spray, but I feel a lot safer. I also want to talk about my street in particular, Citrus. I feel like more and more people are using my street as a cut-through to town. Last year, I did the Leadership Academy, and I talked with the traffic, uh, engineer. He said that they can't do street or speed bumps on my street because the fire department doesn't really want that, but it's pretty bad. Like, I was taking my trash out today, and a guy in an asphalt truck is going down my street like 45 miles per hour. It's just kind of out of control. There's a lot of kids that walk up my street every day to and from school in the morning and in the evening. So I don't know what we could do to fix that. Sometimes I think maybe if we throttled the people trying to cut through on Citrus to get through town, like maybe there's stop signs at all the cross streets, just so you can get people, they can't, I think what they're doing is they see the green light at Citrus and Vista Way, and they just punch it, and they're like, gonna try to make that green. So it's just scary. There's a lot of kids today. I lost a kid to cancer, and I was just like, I'm gonna come talk about these kids that walk on my street, because it would be really sad if any of them got hit by a car, and there's just no need for it, and I gotta come say something about it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Okay, with that, um, it leads us to remarks, and I guess I will do, I'll get, um, I, I have some statements, some things to, comments to make here, so I'll read those. I always feel like a newscaster when I do this. The Vista Library is hosting its fourth annual art exhibit and performance tomorrow, September 13th, from 1:00 to 2:30 in the library's community room. It's a free event, and it's open to the public. Um, second, take part in San Diego's Regional Coastal Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 16th, from 9:00 to noon. Volunteers are needed to help clean up Buena Creek along Sycamore Avenue and Shatteridge Drive. So Only Losers Litter, you could help with that one too. Register online at cityofvista.com. Uh, September is National Preparedness Month, and this year's theme is disasters, disasters don't plan ahead, but you can. Your family may not be together if a disaster strikes, so it's important to make an emergency plan. Check readysandiego.org to download the emergency app or find tips on preparing, uh, for emergency, uh, different types of disasters. The Vista Library provides homework to help student from kindergarten through, uh, kindergarten through sixth grade on Tuesdays from 3:30 to 5:00 during the school year, so they can drop in and sign up and receive 30 minutes of tutoring. So that's at the Vista Library. And so with that, I will pass this on to my councilmembers. How about Councilwoman Aguilera? Do you have any, any comments?
Uh, I don't have any comments. Just wanted to thank, uh, the people that do show up, uh, once a month and pick up trash in our city, and that are invested in our community. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also echo those comments. I appreciate the organization and the group that put together going out and cleaning up, uh, the community, so thank you for doing that. Thank you. I see schools back in session, so, uh, welcome to council meeting, and thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate that you are here. And also to staff, you do a great job for us, and, and I do appreciate it very much. I do want to say a special shout-out again to the fire department, uh, not just for their 90 years of service to the community, but every year, um, for the, I don't know how many years now, um, there has been a memorial stair climb to honor the first responders who were killed on 9/11 in New York, and they do that stair climb here in San Diego County, uh, in downtown San Diego. And we have firefighters and first responders, federal agents, so many different types of agencies, uh, not just from San Diego County, not just from the municipalities here in San Diego, or even Southern California, but we actually have international, uh, firefighters that join also, and Australia, New Zealand, Mexico. Mexico, I think this year had three different cities represented, as well as all over Southern California, Los, and, and Los Angeles, Nevada, Arizona. And this was my second year joining the fire department. I was not walking the 110 stories. I was the cheerleader for each lap, because we don't have a building in San Diego County that's 110 stories, so they have to do three laps up one of the buildings we, we do have. So I was, I was invited last year, and I went, and it was a really moving experience, and so I went again this year, and I want to say thank you for the invitation. Uh, Chief Han, you and the fire department are doing a great job, not just what you're doing for our community, but representing our community out and about. And, uh, Councilman Green was there with me. We were high-fiving and cheering them, so thank you for that. And then just to let you know that I will be leaving tomorrow morning to Sacramento for three days for the League of Cities Annual Conference, and I'll let you know what the education classes are that I come back with. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I want to address the resident who, uh, addressed her comment specifically to me. You can paint me as something I'm not, but that doesn't help advance our dialogue. Uh, I actually care deeply about improving the relationship between law enforcement and our community. Uh, you, you have to take me at my word, because I do. Uh, I had a good conversation, uh, with the folks who came, and I'm sorry I didn't get to speak with you. Uh, I don't know if you were here at the last meeting, but I had a nice conversation, and I promised to engage on this issue, and my promise is sincere. And I understand that there are cultural differences, and there's education that's needed for myself and for the council and the city and the deputies, but I also understand, and particularly out of product of the conversation that I had with the folks who came to speak at the last council meeting, that there probably is a lot of education that's needed for the community as well. We need to know each other better as a community. We need to trust one another. We need to not begin our conversations with, uh, verbal assaults, with, uh, assumed ill will, because nobody wants to see anybody else in our community hurt ever, for any reason, ever. Uh, so I'd appreciate the opportunity to speak with you directly, one-on-one, and anybody else that wants to speak to me, uh, about the subject matter. Uh, after the last council meeting, I volunteered to organize a forum where citizens could have direct input and speak at length about these issues, and work to build rapport with our law enforcement community, and I am committed to, uh, that process and to building a process through which our community can know one another better and can strengthen the rapport between citizens and law enforcement, uh, because I want everybody to go home safely to their families every night, just like everyone in our community does. So I appreciate if you'll give me, uh, the benefit of the doubt that I'm a, a human being that lives in this community too, and that I truly care, uh, about all of my neighbors and all of my, uh, fellow brothers in humanity, and I care that everybody's treated fairly. I sincerely and honestly do. I appreciate you giving me the benefit of the doubt on that, because it's the truth. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Uh, thank you, students, for showing up and sticking at a council meeting. Awesome. In two more minutes, you've officially met your hour quota, and somebody will sign your papers, so that's good news. Um, yeah, hey, no, no applause. Sorry, sorry. It's not proper, uh, decorum, legit. Um, also, I want to give a shout-out to my firefighters. It was awesome, uh, Saturday. They did the San Diego 9/11 Memorial Stair Climb. It was my first year, and, uh, I didn't sign up to do the stair climb because, uh, I didn't think that I could do it without, uh, you know, physically injuring myself. So, um, I was wrong, though. Next year, I got you. So, uh, we're gonna have Amanda cheering loud. She said she's gonna train with me too, so, pretty stoked. Um, one huge thing I want to make sure everybody in this room knows is our fire department was represented better than any other fire department in the county of San Diego. We had the biggest brotherhood of firefighters out here. Our firefighters here in Vista are like family. They all pitch tents, they're, they're kids, they're wives. It was an amazing event, and it was a proud day for me, uh, to be a Vistin, so thank you, Vista firefighters for that. Um, also, our Only Losers Litter people, thank you for all the work you do in our community. Um, I did go to the Alley Art Festival on Friday, saw a bunch of people jumping in and out of the time machine. I was guilty of going back to the day of my birth as well. Um, didn't, uh, it, it didn't actually take me there, but it looked really cool, um, and there were tons of kids who really loved it, so I really look forward to the Alley Art Festival next year. Um, and to the, uh, you know, constituents who are sitting in the audience here, know that our fire chief does show up to these meetings, um, every, every time we have a meeting as well, and that if you have questions for him, his door is always open. Uh, Chuck Sinemo, I think we have, uh, one of the best, um, I'm sorry, police captains, uh, sheriff's captains, whatever his title is, uh, here in the county. So know that he is here, uh, for questions. We also have some amazing deputies in the back, and, uh, I'm sure any of them would, uh, love to talk to you as well if you have questions about training or anything like that. So with that said, thank you so much. That's all I got.
Thank you. Um, yes, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I wanted to let everybody know that we have our official grand opening for the skate parks this Saturday, September 16th. 10:30 a.m. is the official grand opening, and then we'll have another one for the park with the bowl that is at, uh, noon. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that the grand opening's occurring. If you have any informa, if you want any more information on that, you can go to our website at cityofvista.com. And last is, uh, tomorrow night opens officially the last musical of the summer season for The Moonlight, which is in the Heights, so check that out as it will finalize a great summer season. Thank you.
How about a city attorney?
Um, nothing to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
City clerk? Kathy? No? Okay, with that, um, I would tell you all to get the Vista app so you can see what's going on in the city, and if you see graffiti or something, you can take a picture, report it for us, so that you all help us. You're the eyes and ears of our community, so, um, try and get, it's called Access Vista's app through, on your phone. So with that, we are adjourned.